Let's turn our phones off and we'll stand and do the pledge. Gina can lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call. Here.
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 Here. And we'll do, jump right into recognitions.
Just, I just, okay, thank you. The following students won awards for the National German Exam 2019. Congratulations go to the following. For German 1, gold medal, Grantham Gallier. Bronze medal, Benediktus Beleskis, James Dalton. And the achievement award, Andrew Dolges, Kali Ries-Sutch, Mark Logler, Alyssa Krivik, and Jonathan Van Donzel.
Are any of those students here? Oh? Let's hear it for them. In your name, young lady?
Alyssa Krivik.
Congratulations.
For German 2, the gold medal for Victoria Hansen. Bronze medal for Kajia Maywood. Achievement award, Abigail Morrissey, Ryan Locke, Zoe Marzukowicz, I apologize on behalf of everyone there, and Jessica Herrera.
Any of those students here tonight? All right, let's hear it for them.
For German 3, the silver medal for Lena Stoiva. And the achievement award to Sydney Lindenberg, Mia Hiligas, Tara Janey, and Sean Parr.
Any of those students here tonight? All right, let's hear it for them.
And finally, for AP German 4, the gold medal for Anne Sophia Pokraka and Jonah Wraith. The bronze medal for Sylvia Harvin, Gustus Gladstein, Julia Maywood, Christina Tepick. And the achievement award for Jake Strand, Sophia Goze, and Alexander Thomas.
Anybody, okay?
The second set of student recognitions are for the Rousher. The Rousher has earned the National Yearbook Program of Excellence Award. RB is one of only four schools in Illinois to earn this award. The award recognizes schools who achieved the following: increased sales by 5%, make all deadlines, and have 50% of students in the book three times or more. Congratulations to Audrey Connolly and Olivia Myers, editor-in-chief, Karen Hammond, design editor, and Raziel Carmona, photography editor.
Karen is here. Karen, you're the design editor?
Yes.
All right, do you want to tell, don't take this back while you got it. Tell us what went into your role.
Well, it was a lot of meeting deadlines and also designing the layout of the book before, and then just putting that in throughout the book.
And are you looking to possibly go into journalism, or?
I haven't given much thought into it, but it is an idea.
Well, congratulations.
Karen couldn't come last month, but she was also one of the students that qualified and went to state for FCC LA.
Okay, wow, congratulations.
Did you get your other certificate? I think I emailed you back, right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we'll jump right into reports. The president's report.
Before we do that?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we want to give our families the chance to leave if they have not?
This is a perfect time, if you'd like to leave, to run for the hills. Yeah, run for the hills.
You're welcome to stay.
Always entertaining. We're here for it.
You'll get to know each other.
Watch on TV.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, everybody. All right.
I don't have one last, it's huge.
The president's report, I don't have one. Superintendent's report.
Curriculum Advisory Council, no update. Facilities Advisory Council, we met briefly today. We're going to look into one other additional level of inspection as we finalize the completion of the pool HVAC and see if there's any money left in contingency. You know, it may not, it's just something that the facilities advisory is working on, but in regards to the pool HVAC project, the units have been set on the roof. They were being connected today. Factory startup is Friday. Test and balance is next Wednesday, so right now, knock on wood, we are on schedule to be completed before the 4th of July.
Ooh, okay, great.
Finance Advisory Council is scheduled to meet on June 19th. The budget is, the first read is in tonight's board packet. There'll be a lot of work done from tonight through the July board meeting, especially once the June 30th actuals are put in. And so, I assume, being the first year that we're doing a budget with this big of a changeover in the board, we'll probably be doing a lot of work through the tentative budget throughout June, July, and August. But the first meeting is set to do, we're set for is June 19th. Personnel Advisory Council, I've been communicating as needed with them, no updates. And the Policy Advisory Council, there has been no update. I'd like to notify the board, I'm gonna assemble a sixth advisory council, just something. I think that as we continue to look at all of our options with either purchasing or leasing property, I would like to assemble another advisory council as I brainstorm ideas or try to schedule meetings with representatives, either from the county or other landowners. So my thought on that, if they're okay, would be Mr. Durkin and Ms. Alice.
Everybody okay with that? Okay? And that's all I have for right now. All right, principals' report.
Summer athletic camps are up and running, along with summer academic opportunities. Last week, summer school session one started, with 99 students taking a credit-bearing course. Some of those are credit recovery, and others are to advance. We have health and US Gov as options. 16 senior students enrolled in Camp College to get a jumpstart on the college application process for the fall. And we have 90 band students preparing for the upcoming Russian band season, and they've been outside already getting started on that. Full detailed report on summer school will be shared out in August in more detail with all of the different enrollments for you to see. Residency signup information was emailed out to all families last week, and many families are already signing up for appointments online. Our residency website is also live with additional information regarding residency and the required documents that are needed. And again, if families are watching those dates for July 18th, 24th, and 30th, from 12:15 to 8 by appointment. Next, we have the first of two reports that fall under the principal's report. The first report is the second semester school culture report. This is an annual report that includes a second semester discipline and attendance information, along with engagement in our extracurricular activities. So this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Mannan, Assistant Principal of Student Affairs, to come up, and the report begins on page 8 of Board Book.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm here tonight to review our student average daily attendance. That's the first report we're gonna look at. And suspension offenses from second semesters will provide a brief overview of our extracurricular activity participation from the entire 18, 19 school year. To start, we're gonna look at our attendance report from second semester. Looking at that data, we ended up with a 93.75% average. The semester was riddled by significantly colder weather than in previous semesters, which seemed to linger on into May for most of us that were outside doing the traffic control. We also had a week of extreme weather at the end of January, which impacted our end-of-the-year percentages as well. On January 28th, schools opened and we had 84% ADA that day. Something positive to report on during this blast of dangerous weather was utilization through our one-to-one initiative with our e-learning days, which netted an average of 94.3% over the two assigned days, which was a very successful initiative and something that I think we all had positive feedback from. So that was great. Moving on into the second category, total attendance by reason and month. We separated this chart into two categories: averaged excused absences and averaged unexcused absences. In review of the first boxes chart, the cold weather in January, you see, impacted our excused callouts as we rose from an average of 69 students per day to 80. February saw a decline of five students per day, and the remaining three months saw similar averages over the last two years. So overall, we had around 68 students that had a recorded excused absence on a daily basis second semester. And that's pretty similar to where we were at last year as well. In review of the unexcused absence category, the second semester per-day average was down from 13 students to around 10, which is a good thing. Initiatives that assisted some of these positives in the category have been the creation through the Health Office of Attendance Protocols, as well as the Attendance Matter link that's under the parent tab on our website. And we continued our senior final exemption qualification. Students that had a cut, senior students that had a cut or unexcused in their attendance markings were not able to qualify for their final exemptions, and thus, we had more students accounted for and in the building as well.
So that's a significant reduction, so congratulations to the team working on that.
Yeah, thank you. In review of the targeted data second semester, we stayed consistent within the last couple of years after the rollout of our HERO program. For the semester, we averaged around 11 students targeted to class per period, per day. This number was down from 13.6 in 2016 and over 19 in 2015. So since the rollout of HERO, really saw a decline in the amount of students that are in our hallways, and thus, increasing the amount of students that are in classrooms and engaged in lessons and instruction. So that's a great win. At the bottom of the report is our total attendance for the year. In review of our overall attendance, we came in around 94.6%, which is a slight increase from 94.5. Given the weather that we had, we had a really positive attendance marking, over 95%, which is close to our district goal for first semester, and we thought we were gonna get that at the end. We were really encouraged by everything, and then we had some weather that impacted that, which happens. Last year, we had the Cubs rally, so there's things that always come up, you know, that impact our average daily attendance, but we really want to thank our deans for getting ahead of this, and we're gonna go on to some additional things here in a second, which our dean's office are doing to get ahead of our students out of class and, or out of the school and in class. So other notes, the dean's assist, with the assistance of our school safety liaison, Mr. Niemann, they completed over 65 home visits. And those home visits were done after all of our interventions are exhausted. After we do the parent calls, the parent meetings, the interventions with student services, the special department, after, we're kinda at the end of the road, then we're gonna go out to the house and visit our students to see what's going on, and if we can't get them to class. The Riverside Police Department, after we've done those home visits, and again, after exhausting interventions, issued over 22 truancy tickets for students. And that's when students would go to court, see a judge, and then they would talk about what they can do to get them back into school, and how we can assist them in doing that.
Have we seen, what's the success rate on once a student gets a truancy ticket?
Really successful. Positive attendance, probably nine out of 10 times. So it's something that's impactful, and we don't utilize it a lot. Again, it's after all, all our interventions are exhausted, but we've seen, you know, a great impact from our students on that end, so that's why we use that, and it's a great partnership with Riverside on that as well.
So who gets the ticket? The parent or the student?
The student. Mm-hmm. And they go to, they go to court, they get assigned a date, and our deans go out to that meeting, and they're the advocate from the school, and we were able to talk over with the judge what we could do, and how we can assist in helping them get back. So it's another resource that we can offer, so, but it's also one of our last ones as well, so.
Is there a fee they have to pay?
There's no fee. It's either an intervention that the judge hands out and/or community service. So that's something that our deans, again, advocate for our kids to.
I'm assuming it's an administrative hearing, right? So there's no record?
No record.
Okay.
No, it's a juvenile hearing, correct. Other new initiatives this year, the Attendance Matter link under the parents tab, provided resources for our parents such as attendance protocols, research on significance of seat time and student successes, as well as daily health and nightly routines our students can use to increase their sleep and productivity during the school year. In addition to our Attendance Matter link on our parent tab, our psychologists, the deans and myself, went to professional development on absenteeism, and we're working together as a team to really continue initiatives that we started this year with the Attendance Matter link and kind of pushing that forward. And so, when the new handbooks come out, and students will be given those, at residency, you'll see, like, one of the first two pages, we have health protocols, why attendance matters, and putting that really up in front of our students and parents so they can see, you know, why do I need to get my kid to school? And then on the back end, if they're sick, what do I need to do? Or if they're sick enough, what do I do to call them out? So there's a whole bunch of protocols, and we wanted to just promote that and put that in front of our handbook, which we did. And that's some of the outcomes that the team had from our conversations and through Any questions on attendance?
I think you had some questions that were submitted by two board members for the discipline report, and that's what you're moving into next, correct?
Correct. Some of the, in the narrative that I'll be talking about, I built in some answers to your questions, so if I don't answer them, please let me know, but it should be built in here as we go along. So the second report is gonna be our suspension, second semester suspension offense report. Before looking at the data, I will note that we had zero offense, suspension offenses relating in alcohol, gang, theft, or weapon possessions. So we had zero offenses, zero suspensions for those categories. In the remaining categories, let's first look at the drug possession and vape offenses. There was a question in this category, so to be clear, the numbers in this category relate specifically to smoking THC devices and/or being in the possession of a THC device or under the influence of THC. So those are the only areas in which this category, we had offenses and suspensions.
So if 22 is total offenses, 15, so obviously, seven kids did this. Or 15, seven of those 15 kids are.
Correct. Yeah, and I'll break it down here in a second.
Okay.
So we do not suspend automatically for students in possession of vape devices with nicotine. For these offenses, students refer to Riverside Police Department, who issue tickets upwards to $200 in some cases for repeat offenders, and are provided an administrative action such as like an alternative day assignment, and/or referred to our Rosecrates partnership for counseling. We had 29 related nicotine offenses. This is not on your chart, and it's nothing that we suspended for. It's something that we're working with our students internally on, and we have a partnership with Riverside Police Department for as well. Our deans go out to our state conference each year, and this is a conversation, this is something that's increasing in schools, not only in the state but across country. And we're kinda getting ahead of it by hitting the students with a ticket right off the bat. We, you know, since it's so rapid, we need to get in front of it, and, you know, just in conversations with Riverside, we thought it would be good not to put them in front of a judge, but let's get them right in the pocketbook right off the bat, and have a deterrent so that they don't do this again. As well as, we don't want to consequence a kid if they do have a vape with nicotine in it. We don't want to have them lose an opportunity of instruction. So we're gonna put them in our in-school room, we're gonna support them, we're gonna have their work provided to them, and then push in resources, which I'll talk about in a little bit through our in-school room as well.
So is the THC possession referred to Riverside Police for ticketing?
Yes.
Okay. I just didn't hear that part, I wanted to understand.
Yeah, and we'll refer, we'll go into that in a little bit as well. So for this chart, when we go back and look at the chart, 22 students had total THC-related suspensible offenses this year. So 14 students were in possession of THC-related devices. Eight were caught smoking a device and/or under the influence. We had six repeat offenders and one three-time offender in this category, so it's a pocket of students that are continually doing this. So that's why you see a total of 15 students and then the 22 offenses in this category. So again, this is something that our dean's office is working on, along with their school safety liaison. Not only have we done communications through posters throughout the building, had conversations with our kids through our grade-level assemblies, I put a letter out to our parents about the harming effects of vapes and THC-related devices and things like that. We're gonna continue to get ahead of this next year. We're gonna set aside additional time with our freshman and sophomore class. We see a lot of the offenses coming from those grade levels, and so we're gonna get ahead and push some programming into that, as well as, last year, we did a big push into community-wide events, whether it's through the angst or screenagers and things like that. We're gonna do another session in the fall, just on vapes and vape devices. We also did an institute with our staff, where we brought in what we collected through the dean's office for a semester. We showed them, here, this is what's present in your classrooms, because believe it or not, kids do do this in the classrooms as well, so that they're aware of it. We inform them. We utilize Rosecrates, our partnership, to come out as well and provide us information, and the school nurse is pushing out information as well to our staff. So we're hitting it from different angles. Obviously, we need to do more. It's a growing thing, it's a growing trend in our, in our, in our schools and across country, and so we'll continue to do what we can do to get in front of it, educate our parents and educate our students as well. To answer your question about THC-related offenses, it is called to the police department, and instead of an automatic fine, the police department wants that student to see a judge. And so that judge will then hand out, if it's a first offense, either community service and alternative action, and/or potentially a fine for second or third offenses. So that's how we handle that as well. Our next category is fights. We saw an increase in total student fights from 11 to 12, and total offenses from 4 to 13. Last year was kind of an anomaly. We had a really good class last, last year, second semester, we had a really good second semester. This year, we had one repeat offender that fought twice, and then seven were from the freshman class, five from the sophomore class, and one from the junior class. To counteract this trend, we've been creating additional time with our freshman class. Next year, in our grade-level assemblies, bringing in speakers, discuss positive behavior and culture in our building. In addition to these events, we've also utilized our social workers as a resource in our restorative interventions in our alternative assignment room, which has yielded a 2.2 student repeat rate, over 50 students participate in the program. What that means is basically, if a student is assigned an alternative day assignment, we thought this year with the increase in social workers that was allotted, let's push them into work with our kids that are in the in-school room, and then have, like, pull-out meetings with them. So over the 50 students that they've met with this year, only two of those students repeated their offense, which is fantastic. And so we're gonna continue to push that forward, and there's really good data to back that up from our social workers as well. So we know that works. We know, point them out, let's talk about what your offense was, how we can do things better. Instead of hitting them with a suspension or taking them out of the building, let's talk through and communicate things through them. So that worked really well, and we'll continue to do that next year. In the remaining categories, we saw inappropriate or noncompliant behavior, had 12 student, 12 total student suspensions through 15 instances in this category. That would be maybe a student has a verbal with an administrator, or, you know, a student has, you know, some language, you know, with a teacher, and this is after repeated redirection or something like that, where it's the last chance we have to, you know, suspend them out. So we saw 15 instances in that category. Within the last category was the other, and that happened in May. We had some vandalism around campus, and so we had three students that were suspended for that category. So in total, we had 44 students suspended second semester, and then 55 offenses throughout the school year.
Can I ask, for most of the suspensions, just a one day?
Correct, yeah. And, you know, with the new Senate bill, every case is on its own merit, and so it depends on severity. If it's a repeat offense, it might be a couple days. We go no more than three. After three, it's, you know, a conversation with the administration team, so, and the board. So that's something that we really try to stick with, one, get the student right back in school. We might utilize our ADA room a little bit more, so we may go one, one day out, one day in, push in social work, push in the student support team, and so that's kind of how we leverage that a little bit, so.
ADA, just to explain to the group?
Yeah, alternative day assignment, it's a room where a student would be kind of reserved for that space for the day. They would get their homework assigned to them. It's great that we're one-to-one, because everything's through school, Jay, they can log in, they can see their assignments, and then we push in support to others, through social work, whether, you know, students with IEPs, they can get their pull-out support. And then we do conferences with them, and they also do student reflections in there as well, something we started two years ago. It's a student reflection packet, and it's an incentive that we built in, so students are really there from the start of school till 3:15 we hold them. And if they want to get out earlier, three or five of them, they're able to complete that packet, and they get out when everyone else does. And that gives us some good data and some reflection, student reflection from their end, as to what's going on and why are they in there.
Who works in that room all day? Is there a sub, or?
Security, and then we rotate security through, and then our deans go in there, and so do our social workers and support staff, so. From the data that we've had this year so far with the two repeat offenders, we don't have, you know, repeat visitors in there too often, because it's a day that's, it's not fun, you know, you're in one place for the entire day, and so we typically don't see repeat offenders in there, and it's been useful for us. So we'll continue to look to modify and adapt and enhance that as well.
How does the total, the 44 student suspensions total compare with the long-term trend? I mean, is that, you know, is it just now starting to rise, or is that not necessarily out of the ordinary?
I think we had a freshman class that came in that continues to need a little bit of work from Boston, it's a pocket of students, and it's probably no more than 30 students that have had repeat offenses that have totaled, added to this total a little bit. So that's kind of an area that we need to continue to work on and pull those kids out. At the start of the school year, the psychologists, myself, and the deans, we look at early warning data, so we look at referrals from last year, attendance, suspensions, and we take those students and then we pull them out. So our psychologists will take a slot of students, maybe five, 10 students per, and then they meet with them weekly to just assign, like, kind of a check-in, checkout process, and so that's something that we'll continue to do. And then just continue to partnership with their parents, and hopefully, some maturity over the summer will help us as well, so. But I don't see it as a growing trend, it's just one of those things where we had a bad year with a pocket of students, and we'll work through that. We identified it, that's the biggest thing, and then we're gonna communicate and work with our parents to solve some of the issues going forward, so.
What's our student, our total student body number?
1700.
Like 1640?
1640, okay, 1640.
1640, so even if, I was just kind of curious, when we think of the 44, sorry.
Yes.
Hold on, so it was the 44, and you said 16.
1640, roughly?
Okay.
Just under.
So just to put it in perspective, it's less than a half a percent for, you know, suspension, which is really great.
Yeah, and I think with Senate Bill 100, it used to be a quick out for, for the dean's office, not necessarily here, but in other schools I've been at as well. It was, you know, you do this, you're out for a day, you know, and now we really had to look at interventions. Instead of going to a suspension right off the bat, we push in more interventions through in school and things like that. So that's why you see, I mean, if you look at historical data in the five years, probably like before me, you're probably looking at 80 per semester, and that's cut down at half now, so it's been.
But it's been an increase over the last two years for second semester.
Correct. Yep.
I think the thing, too, that we were really working on as an administration is the ability for Dave to break down for you, hey, it was three seniors, two freshmen, one.
Mm-hmm.
Right, I mean, so we're really diving into the data to find out if there's something we need to be doing differently. Were these some anomalies? As you heard about, the freshman class needed a little extra work, and the addition of a .6 social worker last year allowed us to do the pushes into the in-school suspension room.
Correct.
And to do some additional interventions in small groups. You know, and one of the things we're looking at, possibly doing, under Dr. Freitas, is even a little peer mediation, you know, so.
We have peer mediation already, it's up and running this, this school year, and it started the year before that as a pilot, so this is the first school year that we've been up and running with peer mediation.
It's a, it's a program where if we have, like, verbal altercation, we have five students that are trained through our psychologists and kind of like mediating conversations with students. We're still working out the kinks, so I think with Dr. Freitas' help, he could come in and help us work how that program can kind of get off and running. We used, I think, five mediations this year, and so we want to obviously do more of that, and so he can help smooth the turbulence out with some of that stuff. But it is here, it's set up, and it's called restorative practices, and that's like the big buzzword right now in education, and that's one of our restorative practices, to utilize that instead of maybe a detention, kids can go through, opt into a peer mediation. And so, we'll look forward to his advice and we'll go from there next year, so.
Are there any other questions we didn't cover, Dave, that are things you wanted to touch on from the discipline report?
Um, no, I just think, you know, it was, it was a pretty good year. The weather impacted a little bit on our overall ADA, but historically, if you look at from where we're at in 2014, where we ended at in '93, so now we're at almost 94.6. Things are looking up for, for our attendance and where we're at with kids in the building, so it's been a positive thing, and I know our deans have been working tirelessly to get kids here, and it's a really unique thing. I've worked in a couple of high schools in large districts, and we really take an individualistic approach with our attendance, and our deans know our students, they know our parents, and it's a really good relationship that they form with our parents, and so I'm proud to have them, and I think we have a good team downstairs, so.
Davey, you had one other report you needed to go through, the clubs?
Yeah, this is a fun report to talk about each year. Yeah, this is a fun report to talk about each year. So the last report I have is a breakdown of our extracurriculars and our participation of all of our students throughout the last year. In total, we have a significant jump from 1,111 to 1,338. And I thought that looked fantastic today when I was looking at the numbers. I'm like, wow, we're really doing big things. But I'm going to point out that we counted our junior and senior class in our NHS number. So our NHS number is actually 123 and not 215. That would have been great. But we did add more kids to NHS this year, which is fantastic than in the previous year of 102. So that's great. So we're actually at 1,246, which is a pretty good jump still considering. So 1,246 students involved in extracurricular and that's just on the activity side. That's not in the sport or anything like that. So we've done a lot within the past couple of years to increase our program offerings and so I'll talk about that a little bit here. We currently have 39 official clubs and five clubs on a probationary status. That's meaning, just basically means that they're in within their first or second years in the official program on campus. Highlights from this report include the continued success of our best buddies program. Our sponsors, Ms. Silprich and Mr. Zillinger, have done a wonderful job connecting students and their experiences for their kids and it remains one of our most popular and well-attended extracurriculars on campus. The one area that has benefited from, I think, the cold weather, if you look at our ski club numbers.
Wow.
Thirty-four to 101. The ski club was able to host three outings this year and saw a membership increase, obviously there. And I was fortunate to go on two of the, two of the three outings and I saw firsthand how this club provides like an engaging, fun, collaborative experiences for our kids. So Mr. Schirmack and all of our chaperones, we couldn't do without them. But it's a really cool experience going out there and seeing kids who haven't skied before, build up that confidence and at the end of the day, they're going down, you know, by diamonds and stuff and it's a pretty neat thing. So I love going on those and I thank Mario for his help there. Another area that flourished was our robotics program, who won a couple awards, like a first-year rookie award and then another tech award. This program started out of a grant and some additional donations and we fully adopted it last year. It's really cool to see that we have 27 members and just about an hour ago, I'm getting an email about additional like devices that they want to buy and build and adapt our robots and things like that. And so that program is flourishing and I love that we added some STEM offerings here on campus and that happened a couple of years ago and that'll continue to go forward here.
So a quick question on the probationary. So their totals are not included up above. Do you have an estimate? Oh, is that what the parentheses are?
Correct, down below.
Reading is sometimes challenging. There we go, thank you.
So the probationary status is, in the contrast, there is a extracurricular stipend committee and they meet annually before the end of the year to just review the stipend schedule, review student participation, stipends assigned, stipends not assigned. And so what we put in place a few years ago was if students wanted to start another club that we didn't have, they had to go through like a two-year probationary status. They had to find a teacher to volunteer to supervise the club for two years. They had to keep track of their enrollment and their activities and then at the end of their second year, they put, they submit that club to the stipend committee and then we review if they've had enough participation and enough interest to warrant being, warrant a stipend for, and becoming like an official club at the high school.
Okay.
And so this past year, I think we've added pause, Kristen, is it on? Helping pause is on there, that's a new one. Erica's lighthouse, I thought was one that we moved up or added on. Do you remember off the top of your head, Kristen, from negotiations, the girls that code was one and helping pause, I thought were two, maybe the two.
And robotics.
Robotics.
Thank you.
And those are just offerings that kids come to me and they say, hey, I want to start this club. And we get that probably once a week and said, okay, hold on, you know, let's find a sponsor, get 25 kids to go with you and let's do it. And luckily, we have a great staff that'll just volunteer their time for a couple of years. And then if we have just a great involvement with our kids, such as we did with robotics and we're in a role with it and we'll bring that to, you know, negotiations or whatnot and then make that an official thing and that's what happened with robotics. So something that's trending right now, that's along the lines of robotics, is Girl Up Club and that's something that we started this year and that's all about girl, women empowerment and things like that. And so they had, you know, 30 girls, close to 30 girls that wanted to do that club and we have a great sponsor, Los Carmota, and so we were able to get that up and running and they're being, they already had a fundraiser and raised a whole bunch of money and they're doing their thing. So, you know, we encourage our kids to come to me and talk about offerings that they want to do. And next year, we're going to start a reading club that's official. You know, we have one, but we're going to officially name a reading club next year and look to do more with our students. Lastly here, our fishing club numbers are a little bit down. There's a couple of areas that are down, fishing, Olas and Spanish. And fishing, we had turnover with our advisor and so we knew that we're going to be down a little bit and the program that used to come out and do fly fishing techniques and stuff like that kind of dropped off. And so did some of our student enrollment and that. But one thing we did pick up this year was the first time our fishing club actually went out and competed in an IHSA event. And so we almost actually qualified for state on the first time we were out there. So we had four students on two boats and we were like a couple of fish away from qualifying for state competition.
Made a parent donate a boat and I think Mr. Manian donated, he used his father's boat.
Yeah, yeah, we had two boats and Mr. Manian donated his time and it was great. And so we'll look for increased numbers based on that going forward. And then with our Spanish and Olas programs, we did have another turnover in staff and anytime you have that.
What is Olas, I'm sorry?
Olas is just an organization of Latin American students.
Okay, thank you.
And so they, they come together, they do different cultural activities throughout the semester. I know we're trying to get an event here, an after-school event, started up next year. And so we were talking to the lead, student leader of that group and they just thought that, you know, kids are really spread out here and I'm going to do a report, I'm going to come back in the fall and talk about where kids are at and how many sports or activities are they included in. And so they just know like second semester, you got AP tests, you got a lot of things going on. What can we do? Look at the calendar and put like a specific event in place where we can get more involvement. So that's something that we'll do with our kids going forward here. And then lastly, I took 30 kids to two separate leadership events on building culture and climate. And from those conversations, we developed a remind application for students to hear building updates throughout the year. So if parents or students are listening, you can text RBHS events to 81010, 81010 and just put RBHS events. And I have posters throughout the building and you'll get every update from me of what's going on and that's through a remind application. And I use it for, hey, proms, you know, at 5 o'clock, such-and-such date, be here. We have, you know, such-and-such activity going on in this building tonight. Come out and support us. And it's just a good way for kids to hear what's going on and be involved, so.
Do we have a minimum amount of kids to, to have a stipend?
We look for 25. That's, that's on the sheet and then hopefully that's sustainable as we go forward. One of those right now on that status is hip-hop. You know, we had 25 and then we came back to 10. So, you know, we want to have more around 20 or 25. So we'll look to increase that so we can look to maybe get them up running as an official program going forward here, so.
We also have, and we meet with that club if Dave collects this information and this is, so next May when we meet, if we see that there's a decline in that, we look at possibly, does that club need to be moved lower on the stipend schedule? Does that, now with the new contract lenders, does that club need to be frozen for a year until they can increase participation? Some of those things.
That's all I have on this report. Any questions?
Your participation fees are on the next page, right, Dave?
Yes.
I don't think you received any, I think that's pretty self-explanatory and I didn't see any questions come in on that.
Pretty similar. Our kids pay either a competitive fee or a participation fee and we just collect fees based on that and they're pretty similar and there's nothing really that stands out too much from what we've seen in previous years with the collection on that. And that's done through our business office and our sponsors take care of that. We have a beginning-of-the-year activity meeting where we review expectations and that's kind of, that's just something that's already built in with our activities, so.
Thanks, Dave.
All right, thank you.
The second report, tonight under the principals report is the spring athletic report. This is given three times a year after the fall, winter, and spring seasons. So at this point, I'd like to call up our assistant principal for athletics, Brendan Curtin, and the report begins on page 15 of the board book.
Thank you, Kristen. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. So I'd like to share a brief summary on the accomplishments of our spring athletic programs and the teams and what they've accomplished the past few months. Before I do so though, throughout the 10 varsity sports offered this past spring, we had 26 athletes earn Metro Suburban Conference All-Conference status, 11 girls and 10 boys. The boys' track team was highlighted by Class of 2019 student athlete Christopher Magno, representing the program at the IHSA State Meet at Eastern Illinois and ran a personal record of 2 minutes, .9 seconds in the 800-meter run. Other team highlights from this past season, our badminton team developed their roster to include over 60 student athletes, 63 to be exact, and competed at three levels this past year. The baseball team had an exciting season this past year and reached the IHSA Regional Final Contest. They fell to a team, St. Rita High School, that eventually took third in state this past weekend. Girls' soccer took home the Glenbar South Invitational Title this past spring. Our softball team had an incredible season this past spring in winning a regional championship and taking on national powerhouse Marist High School to the wire. They fell 0-1 in extra innings and they ended up registering 27 victories on the season. Believe that's one of the, if, one of if not the finest seasons the softball program has produced in several years. Tennis programs, the boys' tennis program saw a tremendous increase in participation and recorded an above-average, above 500 win-loss record. So they're certainly on the right track, a lot of young, new players within that program. The girls' track and field program continued to improve throughout the season and recorded 14 student athletes to the Metro Suburban All-Academic Team. Boys' volleyball had an outstanding season by reaching the IHSA Regional Finals and registered 29 victories on the season. Girls' water polo was ranked in the top 25 in the state during the season and concluded their season in the sectionals. The boys' water polo team registered a postseason victory in taking down Argo High School at the regional level. I believe this is the first postseason victory for the boys' water polo team in approximately the last 10 years. So again, they're trending in the right direction. Boys' lacrosse competed at the JV level and registered seven victories on the season. Girls' lacrosse also competed at the JV level and registered a 12-1 win-loss record on the season, an impressive accomplishment for a first-year program. The Special Olympics team had four members compete at the state series this past weekend. So that's just again, a brief highlight of some of our athletic teams. Next, I'll transition to our program participation updates. The spring athletic programs experienced a significant increase in participants this past season compared to the spring of 2018. We had 488 student athletes participating this past spring compared to 432 last year. The addition of boys' and girls' lacrosse obviously contributed to the increase in adding 41 athletes, 17 girls, 24 boys. But even without the addition of the lacrosse programs, we were still up approximately 15 student athletes on the 2019 spring season. The sports that experienced an increase in participation were girls' track, badminton, boys' tennis, to name a few. Girls' soccer was slightly down, as was boys' track. In addition to our yearly participation numbers increasing, so have our collected participation fees. Our participation fees collected are the highest they've been in the past five years. Excited to share that of the 488 student athletes that participated in a spring sport this past season, they produced a daily attendance rate of 95%. On a separate note, I'm also excited to share with you that this past spring, the athletic program, along with the booster club support, purchased an additional NFHS Pixellec camera system for Caneli Stadium, which will provide automated live event production, allowing families and fans to view contests remotely. We hope to have this device installed by the end of July.
You already did that in the gym, correct?
So we did that in the gymnasium. We now have the camera for outside, so even though sometimes some major contests might be produced by RBTV, freshman soccer games, lower-level lacrosse games can now be showcased and produced and those families can watch those games remotely if they choose to.
Great.
And as Kristen Smetana mentioned yesterday signaled the official start of our various youth and high school athletic camps. That concludes my end of the report. Are there any questions?
On the third page, you had your participate numbers, correct?
Correct.
And you had no, I don't think you had any questions submitted on that.
I don't think so. The only thing I would note was obviously for some student athletes, it's their first sport of the year, so they might be paying the $200 fee and whereas others, it might be their third sport, so they're paying a $100 fee. So it's not like we can just quantify it and say that all of them are paying this fee or that fee. It's interchangeable with, based on how many activities or how many sports they participated in throughout the course of the year.
How many, three-sport athletes do we have?
We had one three-sport athlete that graduated this year. In terms of the overall number of three-sport athletes, I'd have to go back and look. David Keen was the three-sport athlete that graduated this past spring. It's rare, we know it's rare, but usually, you know, student athletes are able to do it freshman and sophomore years. Sometimes they, you know, feel the challenge to try and commit to maybe perhaps two sports. Obviously, we encourage multi-sport athletes, that's what we want. But with each passing year, it tends to become more challenging.
Can I just ask, and I know Kevin will kill me, because I know it's not a sport, but there are kids that play hockey, but they're not reported from anything. So where do those numbers go?
We should include them at the minimum of our activity reports.
Because there are kids who play hockey who may not participate in any of the other sports.
Absolutely.
So, because hockey's such a long season, you really can't play another sport. I mean, you probably could, but it'd be really challenging.
Sure.
So like, because I know they're not reported out in clubs, they're not reported out in sports.
They should be reported out in clubs, we can add that.
Well, just because there are some kids that, you know, would boost our participation number.
Absolutely.
But it would, I mean, I know there aren't a lot of them, but.
Sure.
Well, do they use the participation fee? Does the hockey do that? No.
They pay a significant fee to play hockey, put ice time and equipment.
I can definitely speak to that. Quite a bit.
Are there any sports that are contemplated on the horizon? Obviously lacrosse was the great new sport being embraced by schools. Was there anything else that's out there that?
We treat bass fishing as a club.
Okay.
Some schools treat it as a sport. We carry 28 or 26 right now?
Uh, 28.
So we're kind of hitting max capacity, you're ready. We've talked about the only other addition being possibly bowling. There has been some talk in the superintendent ranks and I'm sure through the Athletic Director Association about officially making gaming an IHSA sport.
E-sports.
E-sports. Because of all the attention it's got on ESPN and some of the ESPN networks.
It's a college major in some places.
So.
Next you have the fellow governor of poker as a sport.
So we do not have rugby, obviously hockey, kids can participate in a club. I think that's with three other schools, answer it, IC. Is there two, is it two, three schools total?
It's three.
Three schools totals.
So when is hockey's kind of season? You know, we always report out on the accolades of each of these teams by the end of their season. When would be the most appropriate time to report out on the hockey players?
They play all year, like they play September all the way through March. And then they start their spring season and they play April through June. I mean, they play, that's why you, you almost can't play another sport.
Well, it's like anybody who's in club, that's why you see less three. I mean, my daughter played volleyball. She played the first season here and then she played all the way around with a few weeks off, yeah.
We probably should include them in the spring.
In the spring maybe because.
Report between Dave and Brendan, just because at least they're done with their winner sport. A few, two years ago, they won a conference, they won a championship. I know we had the trophy on display, we got the kid's shirts. So we do try to, and we have tried to improve our acknowledgement of the hockey club.
You have, I will say, you have.
They're also recognized in the yearbook and have.
Recognized in the yearbook.
Seems to me there's a fairly strong carryover between. Seems to me there's a fairly strong carryover between hockey, and one sport that they do play is lacrosse.
Is lacrosse, yeah, when they don't play spring hockey, they play lacrosse as well.
So then maybe we can add them next year to, what did you say, spring?
Spring activities.
Spring, so that we can hear, like you said, when they won the conference, we saw the trophy and, yeah.
Yeah, we brought them to the board meeting.
Yeah.
Any other questions, Brendan Network, submitted, or you need to touch on?
None that I'm aware of.
Finished in your first year as athletic, as Assistant Principal of Athletics, any information you want to share with the board, or was it a good first year?
Well, I think I've been blessed with a tremendous support staff within the Athletic Department Office with Donna Sifferman. The guidance that Dr. Skinkis and Kristin Smetana had provided me has been instrumental in my development. They've been incredible sounding boards, so, you know, it certainly is a grind, we know that. I knew that coming into it, but they've been extremely helpful. So when people ask me how the first year went, or how the first year is going, it's, it's, went well, I think, it went great, but a big part of that is given the support staff, and obviously, the coaching staff that we have, and the support staff within maintenance, and assistant coaches, I think they're unwavering in their commitment to go the extra mile for our student athletes, so really surrounded by a tremendous group of people.
Okay, thanks, Brendan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the Chief Financial Officer's report.
Good evening. If we could please go to Board Book, page twenty-two. I would like to highlight the May 2019 financials. This is eleven months of our current budget, ninety-two percent. Total monthly revenue for the month of May was seven-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand, approximately. Of that, seven-hundred-and-thirty-seven, seven-hundred of it was operating revenue. Our main sources of revenue for the month was real estate taxes, evidence-based funding from the state, and then we did receive some payments from the state for special ed reimbursement and special ed private facility to get our third payment that we were expecting. On the expenditure side, there was a total of 2.19 million for total, and then out of that total, operating expenditures were 2.165. The other remaining was a payment for the HVAC project that's going on in the pool. If we look under the expenditure items, salary and benefits accounted for 1.5 million. And then, of course, I always highlight our district tuition, which was at 141,000 for the month of May. Fund balance at the end of May, seventeen million, 800,000 approximately. And as a reminder, I always mention this, the $3 million is restricted towards potential land acquisition for the fields out there. If we flip to Board Book, page twenty-three, and go over the financial statements, the first one that you'll see on page twenty-three is the beginning fund balance plus our revenue minus our expenditures out there for every fund, operating and other funds, the non-operating. If we look at the revenue side on Board Book, page twenty-four, the big piece here that I want to highlight is we're at ninety-nine percent of budget for revenue. We do have a few payments coming in for evidence-based funding, and there will be some extra revenue generated for fees coming in, various things. So ninety-nine percent of budget through eleven months, that should be really close to exactly what is budgeted out there. I think that's a pretty, pretty good capture of what, you know, work went into this particular budget to try to be as accurate as possible to really, you know, capture a true picture of it. So that's, I think, really good at ninety-nine percent.
Question on the state funding that's coming in. With the budget wrapping up and Springfield seemingly working, are we on schedule then for those payments, are these...
Yes, we're going to receive two more evidence-based funding payments.
And do those come regularly, twice a month?
Yes, those come regularly.
So we should expect those before July first?
Yes, so roughly 173,000 should come in, in the month of June.
Okay.
But the property taxes that we're still chasing...
Property taxes we're still chasing, they're about ninety-nine percent of budget on that. So hopefully, we get another tax collection, a small amount, that will put that very close to 100 percent. But if you look in the actual revenue expense report and look at current year taxes and prior year taxes, it's pretty close when you're looking at budgeting-wise, to come within fifty grand of, you know, taxes out there. That's a pretty good guess as to what you think you're going to collect. And that's, a lot of work goes into that to kind of figure out what trends are out there, what to estimate as far as inflation on it, and then also looking at, okay, are we going to get the collection, are we not going to get the collection? You know, looking at three-year history, working with the auditor to make sure that we're looking at this stuff correctly. So a lot of work goes into that collection rate to even get really close with that. So it is very close throughout all funds.
And fifty thousand is roughly almost seventeen million. If I'm looking at that right on the first page of the report, page twenty-six.
Of the revenue expense report, yes.
Right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
If we go to the operating expenditures, I mean, the expenditure report on page twenty-five, if you look at our operating expenditures, we're at ninety percent of budget. If everything goes right, it should be about two percent under what was budgeted out there with it. Normal payroll still has to run. In June, I didn't see any major purchases out of the ordinary that were on the board bills, so that should come in under budget when we get the actuals for June 30th on that. Some of the other ones that are under, capital projects, we didn't transfer the additional 150, that's where that is. Life safety, remember, we can only address items that didn't interrupt the flow of the school day on it, so there will be more payments coming as we get more pay applications from Mechanical Concepts for the pool air handler. There was one that was a late addition in Board Book for pay-up number three that I think everyone got the email with it. And then, moving on to page twenty-six was the revenue expense report. There was a question submitted on rental revenue. There probably was a mistake that was put into the ed fund on page twenty-seven under Source 10, 1910, it probably should have been. Instead of being under the ed fund, it should have went under 20, which captures all our rental revenue on it. So I just think what happened was it was an error keying it in.
So where are you at, Scott?
On, let's see, page twenty-seven, I believe, of Board Book.
Ten, 1910 is rental, which is really a nine-fifty.
For nine-fifty, that probably should have been 20, 1910. So it was just a keying error with it, which then, if you look at our rental under operations and maintenance, which would fall on Board Book, page twenty-nine, for building rental. This one's definitely going to come in under budget on it. We did receive roughly $6,000 worth of payments for the month of June, and we have about $13,000 outstanding from rentals. So even with the 6,000 and the 13, we're nowhere near the 100,000 that was budgeted out there. One of the reasons with this, even though we have lacrosse now going for boys and girls, it actually limits the stadium space out there for rentals. So if you come on a weekly basis, you'll see the teams out there till, I don't even know, nine o'clock, 10 o'clock, practicing. So there has been some rentals that we were unable to capture due to the addition of lacrosse. I'm not 100 percent sure how much revenue we lost with that, but I do know that space is limited out at the stadium due to the schedule to try to get all our athletic teams out there and having the field space.
There'll also be a reduction for the pool, they closed May and June.
So we could look at the stadium and what we did last year and what we did this year, right?
We could, we could do that, yes, but there... Just looking at what was done in that second half of the year with the soccer and the different ones that utilize it, there is less.
Because in your, I think it's your quarterly report, you break down by facility.
Facility, yes. And we'll have that coming at the end of the year, too.
And you'll have, can we just pull last year's to see where the drop-off was?
Mm-hmm, we can do that.
See if there was a facility change.
And I think to take that a step...
First, second, through fourth quarter.
Oh, I'm sorry, gentlemen.
Sorry, go ahead.
And I think, I guess, that was my question about why rental was not keeping up with projections. How was the budget built then for rental? I mean, obviously, girls' and boys' lacrosse was built into the schedule. It was anticipated to be, to be offered. So I'm just, as we kind of look at next year's budget, how do we get to a reasonable rental number?
Yeah, the rental was looked at at a three-year history. It was slowly increasing with it at the time, so we took kind of a three-year average, and that's where it fell. And we didn't want to, you know, project less than what we had the previous year with that average. That's why we kept with the 100,000 with it.
Kristin, do you remember what you put in the budget for FY '20 for rental?
I do not, but I do believe I lowered it based off of, slightly based off of, I used the April 30th actuals at the time to kind of project where I can do the June 30th. But then I will certainly update it once we have the June 30th actuals.
Okay, and then if the pool comes online sooner than expected, do those rentals come back?
You know, I don't, I don't know what the Bullets are doing for their swim lessons at swim team, I know they negotiated something with Riverside Country Club. So it'll just be a matter of how long of an agreement they sign. Is it through the summer or just through July? Because in August, the first week of August, we start girls' swim team practice and some of that stuff.
Sure.
So they will be back in August, for sure, the Bullets.
And I know the summer is usually a lighter time for the, for the pool, too, compared to the course of the year. Moving on, there was no other questions submitted on the revenue expense report. Moving on to the student activity report, just as a reminder, the negative numbers are actually positive in that there were no questions submitted on the student activity report.
I'm going to use that same term in my own checkbook.
Any other questions for Scott?
I think I did have one more question, just in general background on investment management. How are those funds managed, who handles that?
Township treasurer handles that on behalf of...
It's all part of that group, okay.
On behalf of the districts on that. The hard part there is, is getting an exact number as to what they're going to pool on behalf.
Do they hire an actual money manager, or are they doing it with internal resources? Do we understand...
They do it internal with their CFO on it, and usually, you can estimate, depending on what the pool amount of the money is, you get about 2 percent.
They don't use a third party like PMA or someone else?
From what I understand, is they, they do it on behalf of the districts with it.
I think it's something probably...
And they average about 2 percent with their return.
Well, they did very well, obviously, this year, right?
But they also increased the amount of money that was pooled. So that, so I mean, even though it looks like it did really well, that's the hard part, is determining exactly what are they going to pool. And I know I had a conference call with Kristin with the township treasurer in regards to this, and I was pretty adamant, tell me how much you're pooling, how much are you pooling? I really want to try to get this closer and capture an accurate figure. And really didn't get a very accurate answer with it. And just said, if I were you, I would budget this. And it was kind of like, okay, well, I don't, I can't budget like that, my board's not going to allow that.
And we are obligated to use them exclusively for investment purposes?
Yes, we don't even get it. All our money goes through them, and then they get distributed to us.
Okay.
We also did see an increase in the revenue for that because of the working cash money that we had, we had a higher balance, so that's why we got more revenue than we expected.
Okay, thank you.
On behalf of the district and the high school and on the Board of Education, this is Scott's last board meeting. So we want to thank you for your years of service and your hard work and dealing with a lot of questions. And so we wish you nothing but the best of luck as you move on to be the CFO over at Lynden. So again, thank you for all your effort over the last three years.
All right, move on to discussions, FOIA request?
There was one FOIA request, you see in the attachment from legal counsel. This was submitted by the Armed Services. This was, from what Mary Ann and I could pull from our FOIA requests, this was the first formal FOIA request. We do get sometimes letters or emails, but this was the first official FOIA. I think that was the real question.
Yeah, I just was interested to see how the exclusion was used, and I think it appeared appropriate, so, thank you.
That was the only thing on FOIA.
Consideration adding the student board member.
I sent that in a Friday update, I did a little homework as promised. LT has had a student board advisor for over 20 years. Lyden is heading into their fourth year. Both Hinsdale South and Central have a student that sits as a student advisor to their Board of Education. The biggest thing that I got from speaking with the superintendents, primarily from Lyden and Lyons Township, was that it is a senior. They have juniors apply in the spring. They do an extensive process where teachers review applications and do recommendations on students. The administration then conducts an interview process, and then the board will do a separate interview process. The student serves in an advisory capacity, does not go in a closed session, does not have voting rights. They usually go from August to May. Lyden has a student from each campus, LT just has one student. They're always seniors, as Ari mentioned, and both superintendents that I spoke with said that it was, it was very helpful to have them. The board appreciated it so that when they were talking about board-level decision-making and things that directly impacted students, it did help the board get the students' perspective. One of the examples I got was at LT when they were changing, talking about changing their district calendar and the board being concerned about moving finals before Christmas vaca, or winter vacation, excuse me. The student, you know, was quick to say, like, we've been waiting for this for a long time. It would be much appreciated from the students to not have to worry about finals over the break and coming back and having that dead week of school and, you know, it just does help put a second perspective on discussions at the board level. One thing I talked about briefly with President Smithing was, you know, I think this is something as we continue to do our goal analysis and our self-evaluation as a board, but also as the community and stakeholder, you know, developing, you know, relooking at the mission statement and relooking at the district goals. I think this is something that should be put on the table to see, you know, what all stakeholder groups feel about this, whether or not there should be a student advisor and the board can see what feedback they get from the stakeholder groups before they make a decision. But it definitely seems to be a growing trend among school boards at the high school level.
Well, I only thought, the few examples that you had, why, it seems like staff and administration was vetting and picking the student. If we wanted to have it a little more parallel to the process of us coming onto the board, we're chosen by the community to represent the community. I mean, I understand you vet a group of students who say, I'm interested, and we make sure that, you know, just like we had to present our papers. But then, wouldn't we want, assuming if we were going to do this, students to pick their representative?
Again, I think that's why the board should, could vet that process and create their own process, absolutely. Or maybe the administration screens down to, you know, two or three finalists, and then it's a vote by the student body, right?
Right, I mean, that was just the one thing that seemed interesting to, like, parallel the process. So that we're not spoon-feeding the candidate by picking, like, our clone, our mini-me, you know?
No, I, I mean, I mean, I think you guys all know where, where I'm coming at from this, sort of very much in support of further evaluating this. But that part actually would, I would see great value in also, that the, that the student body, basically, you know, that's who that student would represent. So having their voice figured in somehow, I think, would be very smart.
So when do they vote on their class representatives?
I think that just wrapped up in May.
It's either April or May, depending on the year.
Springtime, they would do that also, we put that on the slate for the board advisory slash member.
I think that, actually, that's what the superintendent said, they use the springtime to pick. They use the springtime to pick, to interview juniors and put it on a ballot or do whatever for, so that's what we would have to do. It's not something that we would do effective for this school year. I think we still need to vet this some more and stuff, but it's something that we could maybe look to implement in the fall of 2020. If the board wants, you know, majority of the board wants to do that, but...
It'll give us time to see a meeting with, you know, a meeting with the student representative, too.
Right.
Yeah. I think it's a great idea. And as I said before, you know, we've been going 100 years without one. If we can go 101, then it's a lot of, you know, it's about leaving it better than we found it and doing it the right way. We don't want to knee-jerk into it, and then we're like, "Oh, we should have had the student vote, and we didn't think about it." So I think that's, we're on the right step. That's good. All right. Any other discussion? Visor statements? I don't think we've got to worry about that. Additional discussion items? Point in the meeting, Board of Education members, ready to request to add an additional discussion item? Consent agenda. Getting the approval of minutes.
There's two items on the consent agenda, the approval of minutes and the Illinois Association of School Board annual dues. There was a question submitted on the annual dues. The question submitted was in regards to the dollars. What's the annual dues? It's just over $7,000. And the services we get for that $7,000, which were just the basic lobbying services, the information that's sent out, et cetera, to the monthly notice newsletters, the training. The only thing about the trainings and the conferences, et cetera, those are all additional items that we pay for. So Mrs. Alex had submitted that question. I'll let her speak a little more to what she wanted to discuss with this.
No, thank you. I was just going to ask that item B be pulled from the consent calendar, so we can just do a separate vote.
Okay.
Okay, so?
So we'll need a motion on the consent agenda just to approve the minutes.
Can I read?
Sure. "Resolved that the Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, hereby takes the following action on the listed consent agenda items, approves minutes from the meetings held on May 14th and 28th, 2019, open and closed, as presented and amended in June 11th, 2019, Board Agenda Packet."
All right.
Need someone to second?
I'll second.
Second?
Mrs. Ellis, second?
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Mr. Raska?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
All right, so let's, on the second item B, discussion?
I don't have anything to discuss with the board. I think that I attended the IASB new member orientation this weekend. I've certainly received their materials since I've been a board member. They are clearly a very strong advocacy organization, and they certainly speak with a unified voice in Springfield. I question to some extent their dues structure and their overall mission as it relates. I'm not asking for anyone to change their vote. I'm simply not going to vote in favor of them.
All right.
Okay. So we just would need a motion to approve the dues for the Illinois Association of School Boards.
"Resolved that the Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, hereby takes the following action on the listed consent agenda item, approves-
This would not be a consent agenda item.
Oh.
So if you want to reread it and just stop, hereby takes the following action?
Yeah. "Resolved that the Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, hereby takes the following action, approves the Illinois Association of School Boards' annual dues invoice for the 2019-2020 school year in the amount of $7,176, as presented and amended in the June 11th, 2019, Board Agenda Packet."
Second?
Second.
Tom Jacobs, second.
Mr. Raska?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. Seale?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis?
No.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Okay. And we'll go to old business.
And life safety, capital improvement, pool bleacher bid. Give me one second. I need to go back to my board meetings now. The Board of Education, we talked about this a little, we have a life safety item in regards to the bleachers for the pool deck. And they have been out of compliance for a couple of years. However, they were grandfathered in when they were installed in 2009, when the first pool, when the pool renovation was completed. We talked about this with the Facilities Advisory Council back in May. We did have some dollars available from money, and we saved off of other life safety projects. The thing that's unique about the life safety process, when you deal with the state, the state will approve an item as being a life safety item, but then they have a second set of eyes review ones that you can receive life safety funding for through life safety bonds. So this was approved as a life safety item of something we should address, but it was not approved of something that was, that they should, we should bond money out for. So you can use your reserve bond funds or your leftover bond funds to complete the task. And so the Facilities Advisory Council and myself, after discussion with Kristen, Scott, and Joel, felt that this was really the right time to do this with all the painting going on and work going on in there, try to get the bleachers and everything done at one time. So the bid process did go out. Kristen provided a summary of the bids that were received, the lowest being Carol Seating at $28,500. The alternate, which took it up an additional $13,000 roughly, just over $12,000. And Kristen, why don't you explain what alternate two does?
So the alternate bid is important and is our preference, and the biggest feature that we were looking for in that bid is the bleachers have interlocking decks, so there's no spaces between the bleachers. And given that that's a small space, the issue is when things drop between the bleachers, it's hard to access, and certainly for the people that are sitting there, but then also hard for us to clean, and it also presents a safety hazard. So that's the most important difference between the base bid and the alternate. But the other things are, in each step, the back of the riser will be blue, and there will be an additional guardrails as well compared to the base.
Now, again, this is, we've discussed this with the prior board. We discussed this with the new board at the Facilities Advisory. I can hold it till July, or we can approve it tonight. By approving it tonight would really help us expedite the schedule to get things ordered and installed while the pool is kind of still being worked on. But if the board wants to see it for a second time, we can do that. So I will leave that to the board president and the-
Thomas?
Advisory Council.
This is the money that Joel's paid pretty much saved us over the last couple of years.
By, yes. So there's no expense to the district. These are life safety dollars that we have remained where we were given life safety funds to do various projects. And through Joel's, either doing it with his staff or using local contractors, we were able to accumulate savings to cover the additional money needed for the pool, these bleachers, and a few other projects.
So just a question. So the bill was, the pool was constructed fairly recently. Did the standards change at some point? Is that how it?
Yeah, so if you think about, it's weird, but in 2009, when the bleachers were installed, shortly thereafter, it became where you had to have rails going up your aisles, and you had, you could, your, the back of your opening on the bleachers could not be over a certain height of a, right?
And we also don't have aisles on those current bleachers, which is why we don't have-
Right. I was just struck by the timing.
Yes.
I was, I mean, this is not an old facility.
No, so what happens, though, is with that law changes, as long as your bleachers, you know, your bleachers were installed before that, you're grandfathered in, but every year you get an out-of-compliance bleacher report. It's a weird system. Now, I will tell you this, as you talked about laws changing, exactly one year from the stadium opening, they tried to say we were out of compliance with our visiting bleachers. And so then we had to get an engineer and architect to sign off that. These were like state-of-the-art bleachers, and so, yes, it does change. It's a rather fluid program, but the biggest thing is the ADA compliance.
So the current are not ADA compliant, and these are?
Correct.
Okay.
Any thoughts?
I mean, all I can offer is that it sounds probably sort of crazy, but it's fairly, I mean, stuff like that happens all the time in our industry.
It does sound like it.
It does sound crazy, right? You must have bought some cheap bleachers before.
So the question would be, is if the board feels comfortable voting tonight, or do you want to wait till July?
I'm, I'm, I'm bored.
This side's okay. How about this side? Okay. Someone can read the motion?
I can, I can read it. "Resolved that the Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, hereby approves Carol Seating Company with a base bid price of $41,250 for the alternate, for the alternate option for the pool bleachers as presented in the June 11, 2019, Board Agenda Packet."
Second?
Second by Wes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. Seale?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Mr. Raska?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. District goals, mission, ambition?
I don't have much to share, except tonight, I will, I'm not allowing board members to leave without giving me a date in September out of the four dates I sent you. We could do that after the meeting. But the IASB already has been booked up for the August meetings I sent you. So I did a doodle poll, and by the time everybody responded-
By the time everyone doodled.
By the time everyone doodled, I had five, I had only one date out of the three that worked for the people that doodled, and that was already taken. So now we're on September. So I will give you the four dates I sent you in the Friday update.
Bill, you were doodle-free.
Yeah. Well, I did call Bill to say, "Are you doing a doodle?" And he's like, "I'm about to do this doodle." I said, "Well, don't bother doing a doodle, because the doodle's been filmed." So we can discuss that after the meeting.
Do you have those dates handy right now? I'll look, so I'm prepared for after the meeting.
Yes, I do have those. I have them down in the table in the closed session.
That's okay, I can wait.
All right. Educational tour.
This was the tour the board received last time, and Kristen, was there any additional information you were gathering for this?
No, I just added what I think, based off of the timing, would be an approximate total cost for the students, but all of that was in there. I just updated that cover sheet. It's approximately $1,500 per student, but they'll have multiple options to fundraise to defray the costs.
It's a really popular program.
Sure. The reason we're asking for approval tonight, given that it's a second read, is because they can't start fundraising until the board approves an opportunity like this.
Any discussion? Discussion aside. All right.
Go for the vote?
The motion.
We got to read the motion first.
"Resolved that the Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, hereby approves the educational tour for music students from February 14th through the 17th, 2020, to Los Angeles, California, to perform at Universal Studios Hollywood and participate in clinics at UCLA, as presented in the June 11th, 2019, Board Agenda Packet."
Second?
Second.
Okay.
Ms. Seale?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Mr. Raska?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes. Yes.
All right. New business, payment of bills?
There was one bill that was added, so even though I have highlighted in yellow that there were no additions, there was one bill added this morning. But out of the due diligence of our staff, we wanted to make sure everything was completed before we, you know, cut a check for $83,000. So I wanted to wait for our construction meeting this morning. So I apologize for that, but I also didn't, because we only meet once a month in the summer, I didn't want to have the contractors waiting for their money, and everything's on schedule and going smooth right now. So the last thing I want to do is upset their flow. Scott, did you receive any questions on bills?
No.
Okay.
All right.
Should we go for the motion?
Yeah. Then let's do the discussion.
"Resolved that the Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, hereby approves the payment of bills as presented and listed in the June 11th, 2019, Board Agenda Packet."
As amended? Don't you have to amend it?
As amended to accept the additional bill?
Oh, okay. With the additional bill?
Second.
Added today.
It works.
Second by Ms. Ellis.
Ms. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Mr. Raska?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. Seale?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Transfer of interest from debt service to educational fund?
This is an annual task. Scott, do you want to provide a little color for this?
Sure. As part of debt service, we do have a pretty hefty fund balance that sits in there, depending on when the bond and interest payment is out there. And we did get a pretty significant chunk of money from the interest earned on it. And of course, the fund that we have the most flexibility with is our ed fund. That's why annually we transfer it from the debt service to the ed fund to have the flexibility with it. And then, like you said, the biggest chunk of all the expenses come out of the ed fund with salary and benefits for the school district.
Okay. Thank you, Scott.
Any discussion? All right, and read the motion.
"Resolved that the Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, hereby approves the transfer of interest earnings in the debt service fund to the education fund, as presented in the June 11th, 2019, Board Agenda Packet."
Second.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Mr. Raska?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. Seale?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Intergovernmental Agreement, Regional Safe Schools Program.
Again, an annual task that we asked the board to complete. This is the regional safe schools that's offered out of West 40, which is our intermediate service center. It provides us an option for an alternative placement for a student that may be having frequent behavior issues or attendance issues prior to, or in lieu of expulsion. The current fee structure in the intergovernmental agreement will be $115 per day. Last year, we, it was $120. And we did use, we stood in or two last year, we spent about approximately $15,000 for the services at the regional safe schools. By approving this agreement, it does not guarantee that we will send somebody, but it does secure our ability to use the safe school if needed.
Indication why the price went down, and we're a little shocked.
I do not have any specific information.
What else on the agenda for the price went down?
Right.
We'll take it.
Never happens. Discussions? Let's read the motion.
"Resolved that the Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, hereby approves the intergovernmental agreement FY 2019-2020 between West 40 and School District 208 for the purpose of placing students into the West 40 Regional Safe Schools Program if the need arises, with the tuition of $115 per day, as presented in the June 11th, 2019, Board Agenda Packet."
Second?
Second by Mr. Jacobs.
Mr. Raska?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. Seale?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. The T-Mobile cell tower lease agreement?
So we already have three cell service providers on our tower, Verizon, Sprint, and AT&amp;T. guarantee that we will send somebody, but it does secure our ability to use the safe school if needed.
Indication of why the price went down and brother's shock.
I do not have any specific information.
What else on the agenda where the price went down?
Right.
We'll take it.
Never happens. Discussions. Let's read the motion.
Resolve that the Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois hereby approves the intergovernmental agreement FY 2019-2020 between West 40 and School District 208 for the purpose of placing students into the West 40 Regional Safe Schools Program if the need arises with the tuition of $115 per day as presented in the June 11, 2019 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Second by Mr. Jacobs.
Ms. Raska?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Yes. All right. The T-Mobile cell tower lease agreement.
So we already have three cell service providers on our tower, Verizon, Sprint and AT&amp;T. We have the availability to put one more cell service provider on. This is something that we've been working on for the last several, probably the last four or five months with T-Mobile to get this agreement finalized. So it'll be an annual 1,500 a month, 18,000 annually. They will have the lowest spot on the cell tower. And then there's the possibility of doing another five-year lease after each five-year that goes up an additional 3%. This is a first read. The board is not obligated to approve this tonight. You can approve it in July. However, they still need to go through some local ordinance zoning with the Village of Riverside and some permitting. So every month that we hold on this process is one less month of revenue. And we're probably looking at only six months of revenue for the first year by the time they get this all installed. Is that correct, Scott?
That is correct.
So I did not receive any comments from anybody on the board. Our legal counsel provided a red line version so that you can see all of the stuff that was changed and has been negotiated over the last several months. Our legal counsel feels it's ready for board approval. So this is again up to the board if you'd like to have more time to read this or if you'd like to approve it tonight.
Thoughts? Any thoughts?
I think it looks fine.
All right. The same?
This is consistent with the other agreements we have.
Correct.
I would have no problem approving it tonight.
Okay.
All right. Then I think
If somebody read them.
Read the motion.
Mary Ann, you, we don't have a resolution, so if you can kind of, Gina, maybe if you can just use one or someone wants to use one from the previous page with the formal intro and then just says here approval of the cell tower lease agreement with T-Mobile. Mary Ann, if you could scroll back so maybe it's on the overhead. Previous resolution?
I have one.
Okay.
So resolve that the Board of Education Township High School, School District 208, Cook County, Illinois hereby approves the cell tower lease agreement between T-Mobile and RB. Is it?
That's it. As presented in the
As presented in the June 11, 2019 Board Agenda Packet. Second.
Second by Ms. Taylor.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Raska?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Let's go to the tentative budget.
Fun stuff here.
Fun stuff. So tonight you're seeing the tentative budget with the May 30 actuals. So we still have two payrolls that need to be completed as you heard discussed with Scott briefly during his chief financial officer report. We're still holding out hope for some additional tax collection to come in, which is roughly about $50,000. That was, we're under budget right now on our revenue side and two additional payments from evidence-based funding. I believe we received all four payments now from the state, correct?
That is correct.
Kristen, I cannot recall. Has all of our reimbursement money been received or not yet because we still have some $50,000 for touring board?
I don't think you're going to see another payment for special ed on this, which would equal the one payment from the prior year and then three payments from this current year to give you the four total. So I do not think there's going to be any additional revenue from those.
So if we go off of today's first read, this, again, this is a first read, Finance Advisory Council's meeting, June 19. We'll make some additional tweaks off of the June 30 actuals and we'll ask that the board approve this at the July meeting as a tentative budget so that we can start, continue operating the school district and start purchasing and things that need to be done for the start of the school year. The tentative budget needs to stay on display for a minimum of 30 days. We posted both on our website and it's available in the school district business office. And then the formal hearing is done in September. So we have at least a good three months to continue to work on this and revise this. As you can see on page 172 of Board Book, the anticipated revenue is $26,332,456. The anticipated expenditures on page 173 of Board Book is $27,897,712. So if you go to page 174, the summary chart, revenues are in green, expenditures are in red. The projected deficit at this point is about $850,000. Now, PMA presented, did a five-year financial projections for the board and kind of presented a worst-case scenario to the board in February. And based on a general 3% increase across the board for all employees, they had the deficit at around 750, 716, something in the 700s. After the collective bargaining was complete, the number was lowered to roughly 500 and roughly another $100,000 was reduced, a little over $100,000. So we're just about 580. But we've had an increase of close to $300,000 in out-of-district tuition for some transfer students and incoming freshman students. So that's why the deficit has gone up instead of being lower than what was discussed at the board meeting when we approved the contract and discussed the financials. So a lot of information. I'm sure there's some sticker shock here. Kristen and Scott have worked together on this. Kristen will be taking ownership fully of the budget at the Finance Advisory Council meeting and as we move into July. Page 175 provides some analysis of our financial performance. Put a couple notes on the bottom. 176 will provide you kind of like key expenditures, the breakdown there with a note on the bottom. What I would say to you is this number will probably change is with our best of intentions that it goes down, not up, as we continue to refine this process with the finance advisory.
Rather goes up.
The deficit goes down.
Yes.
All right. Not up. But it's the first, first read tonight, so there's a lot of information there for you to take in. Kristen, anything specific that you want to point out or call to their attention?
I would call to your attention to take a look, if you haven't, at the assumption pages. We tried to highlight the things that were changing significantly that would have an overall impact on the budget. And so I don't want to spend the time going through line by line on those, but I would say those two pages are important to look at to kind of get a sense of the major things that have changed impacting the budget. And then also I would just encourage the board, welcome questions before the July meeting, but also at the same time, please know I already have a list of things that need to be updated because this budget was created based off of April 30 actuals and several things have changed and some staffing has changed and some special ed information has changed already. And so the July budget that I'll be presenting will be updated and actual, but I will go over the changes. But please submit your questions so that I can make sure I answer them because I know it's a lot of information. The biggest thing that will probably stick out when you look at the significant revenue assumptions and expenditure assumptions is the idea of flow-through. And so in the past, this is a grant and in the past it's gone, the money has gone directly through Ladsy, which is our special ed cooperative. And now the requirements have changed and that money needs to come to us first. So you're going to see a big increase in revenue, but you also, it's just going to go right back out in expenditures and we use that to offset the purchase services that we get through Ladsy. So that's where, that's probably the biggest notable change that you'll see as you look through this.
Can I ask about the, you know, the, the primary reason for the deficit increase as projected is the projections due to an increase for special education tuition. Is that basically based on the population or different numbers than we anticipated or is that per state mandate or different requirements? Can you talk a little bit about?
So it is based off of additional students that we're getting as freshmen as well as we have seen a trend of our transition students. So once a student, after a student is, finishes their senior year, they have the option to stay on for transition services. And the trend is that more students are electing to do that and they have the right to stay on until their 22nd, up until their 22nd birthday. And so we've had several students that are receiving outplace services as well as students here that are receiving, that were either in some of our COAT classes or some of our more significant programs. But in general, more of those students are electing to stay on for transition services. Some are year, some stay on for almost, you know, that full-time. But I think that along with the new incoming freshman class is what's resulted in that increase.
Do we have any trend, or how soon do we know what those trends are for freshmen coming in? I mean, we coordinate with middle school and/or we sort of have an idea of what those trends are going to be in the next five years?
I don't know about five. Our special ed director attends the eighth grade annual review
In January.
In January before those students are transitioned to us. But it's not something that you can necessarily, I mean, you may be able to identify some trends, but I mean, it's very fluid process in the, in the middle school districts.
Yeah, we do get, we can certainly get those numbers, but they do fluctuate. You can't predict when the students' needs are going to change and they need to be outplaced. So that, that is difficult to project outside of the incoming freshman class.
I want to say when we do our attendance enrollment projections, I think, Mary Ann, on your sheet that you send to feeder schools, I think it does ask for a number of outplace students currently.
It does, yes.
Now, it doesn't say whether those kids are K through A or what level, but it does say the number of each school, feeder schools, how many outplace students they have. So it does give us some general number.
And on, on that report, we've added recently just an overall look at special ed in terms of numbers, total students that have an IP, total number of students that stay on for transition and outplacement to kind of show you the history of that. We don't go into too much more detail after that, but we do provide the overall numbers in regards to the various programs.
So just a little question with our special ed. They used to have a little company, the shredder works. Do they still have that company and
Yes.
Does that money come into our budget or is that money designated for special education?
It's a, it's money that's helped generate it through the cooperative. So the little bit of revenue that it does generate helps offset paying the employee to work it over the summer and supervise the students over the summer. So I wouldn't, it's not something that's going to help.
Do we see it though? You know, so where, where would we see it? So we probably should see money come in and go out or?
It goes through the cooperative and then the cooperative, I think.
Okay. So we don't see?
We don't.
Okay. Okay.
I could check on that to verify. Kristen and I will look at it. I just had this conversation though with the Ladsy board.
I mean, I think we have some challenging discussions ahead of ourselves related to the budget.
I would agree.
So in advance, I appreciate your efforts. I have many questions and we can sit and talk.
I had a question also about the, you know, the news coming out of Springfield and the fact that there is a budget and I think some, if I read it correctly, some sense that there is, that funding levels are, I'm actually not exactly sure how they compare to what was done before, but that, to what extent can that information be, is that already reflected or will be reflected or can be, I guess?
So, so we have in the budget reflected that we're receiving all of our evidence-based funding, which in the old system of general state aid, we didn't always receive all of that. So that's a new trend that we received this year and will receive next year. And then we have budgeted that we will receive all four payments for any state payments. And that hasn't been the case in the past, but we have budgeted for the fact that we do anticipate getting the four payments like we did this year. In past years, there were years where we only got three due to everything that was going on with the state.
All right. We were anticipating a deficit. The board was anticipating a deficit. We weren't anticipating it being
We weren't anticipating that, Ocho.
No.
But yes, we were anticipating.
And we know that it goes down slightly next year with some retirements and then three more retirements, it goes down significantly, but
And our school trends.
Right.
I mean, we did, we are looking at
Staffing, class sizes.
Teachers.
Right.
So that's a factor. I mean, these are some things we got to talk about that we're kind of going to ride through, right?
As I stated, the Finance Advisory Council meeting is June 19. So if you continue to peruse this and you think you have some questions or would like some, us to look at some areas, it would be helpful to get those to us before June 19 so that we can knock that out or address those that morning and have discussions with our, my advisory council before we bring you a second draft of this on June, or July 9.
Okay. Let's move on. Matters for closed session. Personnel, student discipline, sales lease pending, intermittent litigation, collective negotiations, school safety and confidentiality of closed session minutes. Visitors statements,